This time I'll call to order the York County Council Agenda for our workshop. First item is reassessment overview. Am I turning that over to Mr. Madden?
Can you put up the on the screen here? Good evening, Council. I don't know if y'all can tell from the PowerPoint or the, it's on the screen over there. The unincorporated incorporated reassessment value of projected amounts levied, that's where we're at right now. I've worked last couple of weeks with Town of Clover, Town of Clover, Fort Mill, and even York on setting their value of mill. At this point right now, I don't think any of them have nailed that number down, but we're very, everybody's very close. From about two to four and a half percent is what they're rolling back the millage right now. It looks like only one school district looks like they're doing that. The county did this year for the first time ever, the Auditor's Office, and this was, we'll credit this with Mr. Sigler, was sending out preliminary information after every quarter. Amy Bowe Hiller sent it out the fourth quarter, and of course, some of those numbers have changed, and so there, a lot of people had to go do resets. We are, I think, right now at the point where we've got numbers nailed down, and I'll tell you, these changed as recently as yesterday. So, we're looking at right now, rolling back three point, three point seven mills, which equates to a six and a half percent rollback. That's on the countywide. So, we are rolling back more than anybody else in the county. Now, you are by law obligated to roll back your millage to try to stay revenue neutral, but it is not an exact science. And there's a lot of estimations and projections in there. The Auditor's Office is going back and looking with the Assessor's Office at the conversion from four to six percent, and that's gone from the low thirties to the high teens. So, there's a lot of fluctuation in that. Most of the other entities in the county are saying, I would say, taking a more conservative approach with their rollback. Rock Hill and Tega K, I think for the first time ever, are actually rolling back their millage in reassessment, which I think everybody would appreciate, taxpayers appreciate that. So, everybody's making a good fourth effort. We are on the high end of that. Now, the logic, why would we be on the high end? We have a larger scale, so we have more room for error on ours, okay? The smaller you get, the more dangerous it is to try to be so precise. Now, that is something, Josh and I talked about this today, you know, if we wanted to sort of be a little more conservative with that and see how things turn out, we could potentially earmark any extra that might come, has come from that for roads, infrastructure. I know that's a priority of council right now. We've got a number that we think is going to be exactly where it needs to be, but that's something that we ultimately control and won't really put in place until September. So, there's some time for discussion about that, and I would, you know, encourage y'all to get with Mr. Edwards and sort of talk about that. We feel good about the three point seven mills being rolled back and the six and a half percent percentage. Now, one thing I will point out too, for the unincorporated area, for the first time ever, we're rolling that back. We've never done that before, but we felt comfortable that we can do that and not burn. We've got two entities that are collecting millages from that, the Royal Fire and the Convenience Centers, and we're looking at two tenths of a mill and a tenth of a mill. So, we're not trying to get too, we're not trying to bite too much off on that because we don't want to hurt either one of those funds through the rollback right now. But again, I think we're at a good place. I commend the Auditor's Office for the work they've done this year to try to share information out to the county. I think that's been helpful with municipalities, and we've tried to continue those discussions, you know, as recently as yesterday. So, any questions, Joe might have on this?
I appreciate the information. Any questions?
Yeah, just quick, so, just so I'm completely understanding on this one here, Kevin, at a six point five percent rollback, three point seven mills, then it'd end up being basically an even wash, what you're estimating?
We're trying to stay revenue neutral, okay? Again, it's not an exact science, but you need to make an attempt to stay revenue neutral. You shouldn't be profiteering from the reassessments.
Right.
So, that's what we're doing here. York County has always done a good job of this. We've sort of always led the pack, we're trying to be as aggressive as we can, as precise as we can, which benefits all our taxpayers. There is a little risk in that, but again, because we are the entire county, we can afford to take a little more risk. But there is, you know, some discussions Josh and I have been having about this, that I would encourage council to reach out to Josh to talk about, you know, we don't have to roll back that exact amount, the exact amount. You know, that's what we've got right now. Between now and September, we got to finalize that. Josh and I might very well come back with a different number to roll that millage back, and there's a lot of variables in play with that. And again, I think that's where the dialogue with council and the manager would be very helpful.
I appreciate the information, and I always appreciate the fact that we take the most conservative approach when it comes to looking out for taxpayer dollars. Rolling back has been something that our county has always done. I certainly support that. I do, I do appreciate the comments made about the roads because one of, one of the issues that we know we're confronted with are some matches with SIB that we know are going to come down, and if we do that, that then, that basically eliminates any of the C Fund money. I know that folks, as long as projects are tied or money is tied to specific projects, I think that's a safe way to try and use some of that funding, but I hear your point about that, and I think that's something that council can take up and, and talk through before we get through the end of September. Any, any other questions?
Thank you all very much, Council.
Thank you, Ms. Madden. All right, next up, capital projects update.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here, and we're going to try to make this as expeditious as possible. And I think I'll just begin by going over the topical areas. I'm going to give some focus on active projects tonight, and that'll be followed. I won't get too granular, but I do want to describe to you the types of project management process improvement initiatives that we're undertaking, and at the conclusion of that, we can have questions and discussion if you like. Okay, so, the next three slides, I believe, is in a tabular format that describes the active projects that we have. The first slide here describes the larger facilities that we're undertaking, and if you go from left to right, it gives you the project and location, followed by the project scope and the stage of development that we're in. There's also a column for the schedule, and it also identifies the designer and contractor, and then the last column is a current status column. And when you look at the stages of construction, all of the projects are at a little bit of a different stage, but we can talk about each project individually, but, you know, from a very broad view, the Coroner's Facility, and by the way, I don't think that there are any projects that are currently suffering from budget stress or scheduling. There is a piece of Catawba Bend Phase One that we do have some concerns about the weather, but as I'll explain, the engineering department is working intentionally with, with the contractor to try to keep things on, on schedule. We have had a lot of rain, and when you're putting in an access road in some of the other facilities, that, that does pinch the schedule a little bit. But the Coroner's Building, we just received and you approved a construction bid for four million, seven hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars and some change. We haven't proceeded with construction yet because we're still working on getting permits from the City of Rock Hill. The Sheriff's District Three Office, that's a renovation of about eleven thousand square feet. We're approximately forty percent complete, but it's accelerating, and at this time, it seems to be well within the budget, and the work is moving along. The Moss Justice Center, you just recently approved a final design with mostly, Mosley Architects, and that involves a, an addition with a booking center and a medical, medical facility. And you'll see that the schedule for final design, it'll take approximately a year to complete, and then the projections for construction would be fall of twenty-six extending to the end of two thousand twenty-eight. We did have a concept plan, it's a hundred percent complete. Final plan is underway. There have been kickoff meetings with Mosley Architects, and they're working presently on the scope and try to determine which is the best construction delivery method to undertake. If, on this slide, and I talked very briefly about Catawba Bend Preserve, the entrance road, the gatehouse, the trailhead, the schedule is maintained at being open to October or being open in October of this year. The budget and the bid are in line, the cost to date is line, is in line, and it's seventy-five percent complete. But once again, we are being mindful of the effort, and once again, engineering is working aggressively along with the contractor to make sure that we, we can have the opening when we plan. There are a couple other Phase One projects at Catawba Bend, which are adding certain amenities. The next project involves a one point five mile multi-use greenway, and there is some dam restoration. Three dams, I believe, that need to be restored so they don't fail. That, that is beginning in August of this year. It'll probably be a two-year process. I don't, I don't perceive that the Greenway, Greenway Trail is going to take two years, but I think we're making allowances for the dam renovations or the dam preservation. And again, the bids are favorable. The cost to date, which forgive me for, for the omission, it is within budget. Well, there is no, there is no cost to date, forgive me, I was looking at another project. But again, we're waiting on permits, and we will begin to proceed with construction as soon as permitting is complete. There's also another amenity where we're attempting to put in gravel parking lot, mountain bike trails. Again, we, we are under negotiation with bids. We want to begin construction by September of twenty-five. We want it to be complete by February of twenty-six, and this is a design-build project with a company called Nature Trails North Carolina, who has expertise particularly with mountain bike trails. But right now, that, the horizon for that project looks positive. If we go to the next slide, yet another amenity project that we're working on at Catawba Bend. We want to put in eighteen-hole disc golf course, nine-hole beginner course. The, the schedule has already begun for construction, and the end date projection is July of two thousand twenty-six. Again, a design-build with Ace Place Disc Golf. And this particular project did receive some grant funding in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars, and I believe the preceding project did for the Greenway Trail as well. So, we're fortunate to get leverage funding from the state for both of those projects. We go to the next slide. Again, the focus is, is on parks, or, I'm sorry, it's not the, the next slide.
Take your finger off the GoPro.
All right. Having to learn how to use a new gizmo, forgive me.
Go on the other way.
Yes, thank you. The Field Day Park Project, we're approaching completion with that in the fall, and that was an expansion, an upgrade of a maintenance facility, pickleball courts, bedding cage, and restrooms. And we also received a four hundred thousand dollar grant for that project. And then, another project that we're looking at, and it's just mobilizing in the planning stage, is a nineteen-acre concept design and program development, and again, we're working on mobilization for that. Continuing, continuing on with Parks, Worth Mountain Park, we're scoping a nature trail right now. We're doing that internally with Parks and Engineering, so the budget is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but we don't have any cost to date or any grant money, money or leverage funding that, that was available. Wood End Park, five hundred thousand dollars was approved in the budget to be, begin scoping and executing demolition, a gravel parking lot, and to establish a nature trail through the park. So, again, Parks and Engineering is working internally on that.
And I think we messed with these slides. That is the money, the seven fifty from the state.
Oh, okay.
Our House member to the west.
Okay. Understood. So, we, we would like to take a brief moment and talk about the animal control or shelter facility, and as the agendas for next week begin to come out, we, we have, after doing a considerable amount of due diligence in the last six months, determined that an owner's representative would be best to manage and marshal this project, and Kevin in particular has been involved in the procurement end of it. And I think together, you know, we, we can tell you why we went in that direction and where we think it's going to go. You'd like to add anything?
Yeah, I'll go ahead. I think it was Tom's first week here, we had a meeting about the design for the animal shelter, and then I think all of you remember the presentation. Tom and I have taken a deep dive into that, and we're basically hit the reset button on the animal shelter. The next council meeting will be the second time in front of y'all to hire that owner's rep. We're going to hire the owner's rep on Monday evening, and then Tuesday, we're going to start doing road trips. We're going to look at different parcels we own in the county. We're going to find the best location, the best parcel, to build the most cost-effective animal shelter, okay? Topography, water and sewer availability, all that's coming into play. We want to make sure we pick the most cost advantageous price. So, we're going to look everywhere, we're not going to consider just that one site, and we're going to pick the best site, whatever they might be. We will provide regular updates to the Public Works Committee as to what we're doing, what we're moving, where we're at through that process, and then the Public Works Committee will keep council updated as well. When y'all looked at those cost numbers on constructions coming in, a lot of stuff coming in right around seventy-five, eighty percent of budget. Our hope and our goal is to get that number back to the sixteen million when we get a bid back. That's what we're striving for right now.
You mean the sixteen million that was supposed to be the max budget?
The sixteen million, that was the previous budget, yes, ma'am.
The max budget? I thought, I thought council's put, put a pretty hard line on that.
We, we are going to
I'm going to reiterate that.
Work as quickly, and again, we're trying to deliver what we need. This building will be built in the same manner as the Public Works Building. If you've been out, those of y'all been out there, very nice looking building, it's got a metal exterior. One advantage of the owner's rep is they can best tell you what's going to save you money when you design it. Masonry, one thing we've learned right now, masonry's very expensive, expensive. We're going to build the best building we can, at the best cost we can, and we want to try to get into this market for a bid as quickly as possible with, you know, our goal being to get the best price we can. So, I know this has been a long road, and I think we've talked about it now for probably four or five years, some of us up here, but we're close, and I'm very happy with the route we're at right now, and the owner's rep is, as Tom has alluded to before, this is a very unique project, and to have an owner's rep guide us along the way is going to be very helpful on this. So, any questions about that? Thank you all.
There is a question. It goes back to, I really, I wasn't at the meeting, Public Works meeting. Was there discussion about that total number?
Yes.
Okay.
They understand the assignment to.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chair, I'll make a comment. I know this is very sensitive, but we talk about the number being twenty million, sixteen million, whatever the number's going to be. To me, when I joined council, I went over and toured the facility like all of you did probably when you joined council, and I walked out of there thinking, and then I joined council and, and learned that we're going to build a facility that'll be out of date in five, ten years, we'll have to expand it, and, and I asked the question, why? Why are we building such an expensive facility, and why are we going to outgrow it? Because when I went through there, ninety percent of the dogs that were there were bully dogs, and they weren't adoptable. That's an unfortunate situation. So, are we building a facility today and a larger one tomorrow to house dogs that aren't adoptable? I, I think the focus needs to be more on what we're doing in prevention and what we're doing with making some difficult decisions, and less about whether this building's twenty million or sixteen million. If, if we deal with the problem, whatever that means, don't read too much into that, but if we deal with the issue at hand, then I think we arrive at a number that we need for a animal control center that serves the needs of the citizens in this public of York County.
Let me, I want to make a comment. At our Public Works Committee meeting, we had some discussion with Animal Control about doing some of those preventive measures, as well as, the conversation came up, are we trying to be a no-kill? And I think we kind of realized we are a, I like to use the term, a less-kill, because we know we're going to have to euthanize some animals, but we tend to outgrow these facilities when we say that we're a no-kill. And that's not what we do, we didn't do an order saying that we're a no-kill. Obviously, the goal is to adopt the pets out, but we going to have to make sure that we're, when, when the time comes, we got to pull the trigger to euthanize, because if we don't, we're going to outgrow it
Yeah.
Probably faster than we normally would. So, this, this thought of us, York County, being a no-kill county, I think that dictates what we're going to have to build. If we're going to say we're a no-kill, we're going to have to build one as big as, big as a mall, a shop at the Mall of America, but that's not the goal, but, so we're going to have to rein it in.
Real quick, Kevin, before we jump in.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think we're saying we're no-kill, and I know Kevin's going to reaffirm that.
I was speaking to that.
We're not, we're not that.
Right.
And I do completely agree with y'all, this is a yes and, this is a both. We need to look at our policies, we need to look at the building, and we need to plan for the future on both fronts. So, Kevin, was there anything you wanted to add to that?
Yeah.
Sir, you got it.
Yeah, I, I just, I, you know, again, I, I agree with both of y'all. I think that we need, we need to drill and iron out our policy before we move forward with identifying the size of the building, so.
Well, the size of the building, again, we're going to go through that and bill what we need, and I'll point out to everybody, for the obvious, this building was built, I think, right around two thousand, two thousand and two, or something like that. It's lasted over twenty years. The goal would be for this building to be a twenty-year building. That's the goal. We don't control the growth of the county, so that's, you know, there are things that are in our control, but I certainly, anybody that knows me knows I don't want to build something and have to redo it ten years from now, and that's what we're going to work towards. And, you know, I'll reiterate what Mr. Edwards said, you know, we keep the statistics, and statistically, oftentimes, we qualify as a no-kill, but unfortunately, you know, every week, there are meetings had where we have to decide which animals to euthanize. That's just the nature of the business that we're in. Not anything very pleasant, not something we'd really like to talk about, but we're not going to build a building and then change and try to become something we're not.
I do want to point out, we talked about being able to get some additional funding to Animal Control to get out to these, to these groups that are helping keep animals out of the animal shelter, because they're the boots on the ground, they're the ones working the rescues, those are the ones assisting pet owners with whatever those needs are, whether it's shelter, whether it's food, on the preventive side, to keep them from trying to bring to us to take care of, because the cost
Yeah.
Under that roof is far greater than
Yeah.
What it would be to start assisting what it would be to start assisting some of these rescues a little more, to help us that way.
I agree. I think that's all part of the policy that we have to create before we get, we even look at it and anything as far as-
I definitely think that if the, if the committee, and I think we did refer this, there were some, some requests that were made by the Animal Patrol. They had some proposal, if that's being considered and evaluating the, does it, I think those things have to be evaluated, as well as the free spay and neuter program, which apparently has, has, pays huge dividends. But being able to balance out how it impacts the population, as to whether or not it justifies the additional expense, I think those things, if they're being evaluated within the Public Works Group, including those, Josh, I know you mentioned them earlier this year, whatever those things were that staff asked to be considered, I think the, the Public Works Committee certainly is free to consider that. I think doing the analysis of the cost benefit is critical in terms of being able to figure out how that factors into the, to the construction piece.
We had shared some ideas with y'all, but I don't think that was ever formally sent to committee, so that could be something-
I think it's part and parcel of that.
Okay.
So, to the extent that you're receptive to that, then-
Yeah, we're gonna have those conversations.
Then, we can formalize that at the meeting on Monday, or we can just do it here. I mean, I think-
Well-
I think that we've done that before, and I think that's part of the, part of the analysis in this case, too, so.
Well, I will attest to the fact, Councilman Lynton, Councilman Roddy, at the committee meeting, that we, we were not only given a mandate to make sure that we include the committee every step of the way, and as I'll be talking briefly about process improvement in a moment, they, they will be key stakeholders when we talk about policy, when we talk about how development of the facility progresses. The owner, owner's rep is a stakeholder, so we're gonna work very collectively and very hard to make sure that we get in the buy-in from the committee and the buy-in by the council. But, as you all have alluded to, the way we deliver the service drives everything, and it's going to drive the cost of a facility that we try to develop. Since the project interest is, or the interest in the projects is probably greater, and would, do you, do you just wanna have questions and comments about that at the end, any of the other projects? Or you want me to finish up first?
Please finish.
All right. I think it was important, you know, I've been here for almost eight months, and in, in evaluating the departments within the portfolio that I'm responsible for, we, we've been having substantive conversations with, with engineering about project management. And I happen to be a big believer in what comes out of this organization called Project Management Institute. And in its origin, it was usually driven by IT people, but it's, it's kind of taken a wider scope, and they actually train and certify a lot of people in project management, which is very broader beyond IT. And they, they have a lot of great approaches, but very, very quickly, what, what I'm attempting to do is make sure that we build a project delivery culture. It's, it's focus on the project. How, how do we get it done in the most efficient and effective way? And PMI principles are very apropos, if you will, to capital projects. And, you know, I have in this diagram here, key elements, and it usually starts with committed stakeholders. And if you have the committed stakeholders, whether they're internal or external to the project, that gets you that much closer to project success. But, what you have to do, broadly speaking, is you, you have to scope the project well, you have to monitor it very well as it's being developed. And then, when you're doing what I call post-closure activities, that's where you really go back and say, what did we learn as this project closed out? Yeah, we maybe came in under budget, we were, maybe we came in, in time or early, and, and that's great, but there's something we could've done better at all times. It's, it's like the old continuous improvement stuff that we heard about in, in management circles years ago. And I'm not gonna go through bullet by bullet, but that just kind, this here kind of illustrates how you get to the desired deliverables that you wanna have. You know, have a good purpose and objective, again, include key stakeholders, set milestones, and all the way down the line, if you, you use these best kinds of practices for, for every project, that's going to lead you to more success. But, you know, PMI, and I believe that at the beginning of the project, you have to create a project charter, almost like a constitution, if you will. You know, you've, you've got, you've got to create your objectives, and what you wanna get done, and what the end game is gonna be in, in a, in a very detailed way and with great due diligence. If you don't do that, that's when you can potentially run into things like late projects, cost overruns, and so forth. One interesting thing that we're doing, and it's actually initiated and led by information technology, thank you David, we are looking at different types of project management software, and there are several departments involved in a, in a panel. I think they're still a little bit in an exploratory stage, and I think they've begun to look at several different kinds of products on the market, and to see if we can find the right fit for York County. But, in their examination, these are the three objectives that we want to achieve, real-time integration of costs, schedule and risk, dashboards and portfolio level visibility, and make sure we can configure something, not only that helps capital projects, but can help all departments. And I think thus far, the reports I've been getting is, IT has been doing a great job in leading this initiative. But at the, at the end of the day, what it's all about is, is performance. And, again, we always wanna make sure that we're on time and at or under budget, but we wanna make sure, and one of the things that I'm very intentional about doing, there, in, in capital projects, nomenclature in the construction industry, you know, there's, there's certain KPIs and metrics that you can use to see how well you're doing before, during, and after a project. And I'm working with that on engineering, and we're pilot testing a couple of projects with it, and they're adapting to information outlays or overlays that, that I put out. And I think this is something we wanna apply to every project that we have. So, that's all I have this evening. Any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Couch. And I, I'll say, I very much appreciate the, the manner in which the information has been shared tonight. I think that those, being able to show a spreadsheet of the projects and also drilling down, one of the things that we learned was, the biggest takeaways from the conference was having performance measures tied to everything that we do, whether it's a construction contract, whether it's improving a certain service area, that's something that I understand we're gonna be spending a good bit of time, council, the next few months, drilling down on those goals that we've identified and putting the performance measures next to them. And I think that's, that's a critical step towards more professionalism and transparency to the community. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Do we have any other?
I just had a question about, when you were talking about the Riverbean project.
I'm sorry, sir, which part?
Riverbean. Us putting in the gravel parking lot.
Yes.
That's a huge investment out there, so why are we just gonna do a gravel parking lot? Is that temporary, or?
$500,000 was approved in the budget for wood-end improvements.
No, no, Riverbean.
I'm sorry?
Riverbean. The Riverbean parking lot.
Can you go back to that slide, Karen? That was for the mountain bike, the mountain bike project is what you're referencing.
Oh.
If you go to the, so, it's for the mountain bike trails with the gravel parking lot, the bottom one?
Yes.
Think that's what you're referencing?
I think that's a separate parking lot from the parking lot that we're trying to improve parking lot for the greater access by the trailhead and so forth. So, you know, there is a limitation, limitation in funds, but I, I know from experience that you can put in a compacted gravel parking lot, and if you build up the, the base of the parking lot adequately, you can come back and put asphalt over it or additional drainage. But I, I think with the funds we have at hand and to achieve, you know, the, the service in that area of the park that we wanna provide, I think compacted, a compacted gravel service is adequate.
Okay.
But, but it gives us the opportunity to improve it later, especially if we maintain it well.
And I, and one more thing. I didn't hear any plans for the District Full Park. We need to get some conversation going on now.
I think the next step for that would be to refer to committee, the next piece of that program, which was to identify other, other locations so that we could start acquiring the land. I'm certainly supportive of that and would be willing to, to have that direction given to the HGP committee.
Thank you.
So, can we refer it to the committee tonight for Phase Two?
Typically what-
Whether it's hiring a consultant or whatever.
Typically, what we've done is we've done it at the main council meeting, so, but I think this is helpful. If council's supportive of that, it should be an easy, easy ask Monday night.
Right. And I, I think in theory, if you go to the Parks Master Plan, which has been assigned to the committee, the recommendations, looking at future parks was one of those recommendations. So, I would just ask the chair, you know, I know there's an upcoming meeting, but conceivably, that's already on the work plan for the HGP committee. I don't know what you think.
I don't think that was in the actual proposal. I think it'd probably be better just to have a clean referral.
Okay, that's fine. Clean referral it'll be.
Just do that Monday.
All right.
So, Tom, real quick, though, the, the PMI process is obviously the route to go, right? That software that you're talking about is great for scope creep and identifying, you know, mitigate any change orders that, that you foresaw coming up in that. But the question I have, though, is, is really around the list here. Some of them haven't been bid it out, and I think we have, like Moss Justice or Field Day, maybe this, these other projects coming up with the local bid preference that we're working on getting to fruition. I think that we've got some opportunities to exercise that new program with some of the new stuff coming up, so just, you know, sharing that oversight.
Yes, sir, we will be very mindful of that.
Yeah. Thank you, man. Appreciate it, Tom.
Madam Chair, anything else? Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
All right.
Do we have a motion for executive session?
Yes, we do. A receipt of legal advice, contractual matters, project Freedom One and Project Freedom Two, or Freedom Two.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All's in fair say, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll head straight into executive session.
Take care.
We're out of executive session, no action was taken. Do we have any motions?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.